All right. You could all join me. Right, thank you. So we are here to discuss a timeline for the study of RSA one ninety-five sixteen A, which is simply the addition or reduction in grades responsible for and cooperative. And so Kevin has put together a potential timeline to start with, so if it's all right with you, if you could start us off with what you came up with.
Sure, so actually I was gonna get proper credit, I used Markish Intelligence to help me create this. I put in a very long timeline, but my configuration was, what our new configuration wants to be, who we wanted to involve, and when it's a timeline, we included public comments. So, and it created basically this, I think somebody messed up updated it because it said meet with superintendents, does somebody add that?
I did, I was gonna suggest that.
Yeah, 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 I thought that was a good idea, that was a good idea to add that. I really, I just read kind of the, what the timeline and what it has us to do, I didn't really look at the dates. So I think the dates might be a little bit off, some of them might be a little bit, for example, on page two, from data analysis to read your interim report is only fourteen days, that's a little tight to me to do, I think we need more time for that, but other than that, I also, after thinking about it, more, it's like in the car, I think it's missing in terms of creating groups to look at this, it's missing a group that would be the SAU group, the high school group. This really, it's leaning more towards the five towns and not so much to, that was left over. So I think that needs to be added in here too. When we're creating, I think that's easy on our side because we have two at-large members, they dissent on that committee, but how do we make up the rest of that committee to be representative of towns as well as the most rich? Or do, I don't know how to, so that's why.
Budget committee, if I'm sitting on this one.
A topic. Other than that, I think it's, it's a, it's, it has four phases, just the first phase is bottom line, just establishing our research groups. Second phase, just gathering information with, I like that it has an interim report at the end, and that interim report could then be made public at the end of April. Then a whole couple of months of community engagement, which I think is very important, bring community members in and start to get their feedback. And then the finalization is really just another few months of doing more. Once we get a final plan out there, kind of making sure it works. I think some of that time in the public meeting is December, December first is what I told it, I wasn't sure when we decided that public meeting should be, but I knew it was sometime in December.
I think December first was the date that we were talking about to have it to the public. So I think that's good. I do have some, my first thought is that I really like how it spread, spread out in the phases. And I love that it gives us something, a jumping off place.
Yeah, that's, that's the reason I created that, I think it's easier to not modify something, you have a shell of something than it is to create a whole cloth. So that's the only reason I created this in the first place, just to have us, give us someplace to start.
I don't think it works great.
I think, you know, it's.
To learn how to do that. I'll tell you, I was like, wow, yeah, nice.
I do have one concern.
Guys more intelligent than I am.
And the only concern I have is that in our motion, we were very clear that if any number or any one of the towns votes in favor of calling for one ninety-five twenty-five study, feasibility study, that we are not going to continue. And so I hesitate and I would love feedback about creating the individual committees and then saying, I'm sorry, we're not going to do this study. So I would like to kind of move the creation of those, that committee, I guess it's multiple committees, to after we know whether we're moving forward or not.
I don't think it's multiple committees, why would it be multiple committees?
You have a committee in every town.
Kind of a committee. Oh, subcommittee.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
But to reach out for the interest and then say, okay, sorry, we're not going to do anything after people have expressed an interest, I think would deter us from doing it again.
You also have to, on top of that, we're requesting that a school board member and a select board member from each town present. And there are possibly new school board members coming on board, and there are possibly new select board members coming.
True, true.
If we were to do this prior to the election, I think we automatically lit ourselves because anybody who's on the ballot probably is not gonna feel comfortable stepping up, just in case they don't do it. However, I mean, maybe Kevin can go back through, but that's gonna also, if we start it, what is it, a month later, it's gonna condense.
It's gonna squish it.
Everything as well, so.
I mean, in all honesty, we know that if it's a one ninety-five twenty-five study, it is already a school board member and a select board member, newly elected or not, they are part of that study. So it's kind of the same, it's just the outreach to the town for community members as a part of it, that I would hesitate to make a call for, yeah.
See, I'd do the opposite, I didn't sign up now, because with the caveat that if this other thing happens, this will get pulled back.
Agreed.
Yeah.
I just, you know, we're very upfront with the fact that you've already stated that this thing, other thing happens, we're gonna have to pull back, but we really, all we're doing is getting their interest right now.
Yeah, gaining interest or gauging interest, right? Because there may be no interest in, I don't know, I mean, I wouldn't think so because of the people that showed up. But, you know, actors may be like, yeah, no, actually, Ryan said she'd do it, but.
We'll have some, don't worry.
Which is good, because she has a background in schools, but. Yeah, I, I just think it's better to roll out and let's start it than at least they can't say it and do anything. That's true. You know, because we've, we've talked about it so much, right? Don't stagnate right away.
So, we don't have a board meeting on the twenty-fourth. However, we could move that to the next board meeting. And that would give a little bit more time for outreach without really dampening the formation of committees, I don't know. Thoughts?
So that would be the March third, by March third, we don't have a meeting until March tenth.
March tenth, there. There is the first Sunday.
That might still work, we might change that confirmed membership to March tenth. And then the orientation meeting for the new research group could be after voting day?
Yeah, then you're not tightening it up.
So tightening it up a little, but not crazy. But you're not doing it twice.
Right.
Right. Like, somebody might live.
It's very, it's also very possible that the same people who, who step forward to do something like this would also step forward to do a feasibility study if they wanted to change gears. I'm not saying that we don't, we're not gonna have to go through that process, but as you know, our pool of people who want to do things are sometimes the same, so.
So you moved February twenty-fourth to March tenth?
March tenth.
And then what, go do the next one on March seventeenth, which is St. Patrick's Day?
It's the orientation meeting?
That's just.
So I'm gonna change this March.
I'm not doing it.
Seventeen.
I said you're gonna change the orientation meeting for the research group to March seventeenth?
You said you're not doing that?
Chicken salad and get us.
I will be here.
Okay.
On March seventeenth.
What is March seventeenth? What's St. Patrick's Day, I'm Irish. Oh. I get that it doesn't mean crap to a lot of people, but.
Actually.
No, I just was like, is that a Friday? No, it's a Monday. I have to drive to Boston to pick up twenty-two kids the day before, in a bus.
So that.
Nobody else will drive to Boston, get a bus.
But then you're. Wait a minute, I was confused, because March fifteenth is on a Saturday.
Well, my thing says the seventeenth, it, it is.
Just, it just picked days every two weeks.
It randomly grabbed days.
Yeah, memory, it kind of randomly grabbed.
If we did it early and said we were out by seven, maybe.
Okay, so.
I'm assuming I'm gonna wish, okay, you know.
So gather information, that first initial orientation meeting?
That's empty, this point do every two weeks, right? Oh, you could, because you don't want to do it on the same days that we're doing ours.
Yeah.
The school board years.
Right.
Right, the school board meetings in March.
Seventeenth, that sounds different.
When is the vote?
The eleventh.
The eleventh. Oh, really?
So we will know by the seventeenth. Well, no, we don't, not, not necessarily, because Walpole's town meeting is the fifteenth, so I don't know if the fifteenth, which is on a Saturday. So, if they have a recount or anything of the sort, not that I expect.
No, they'll do, they'll, they'll whatever reconsideration. They do that on every simple, a minute, everybody's.
So the the brainstorming sessions that come next are really town-specific, and so they aren't gonna be, really need to be scheduled, they'll be their own schedule as it comes with them, so we just, we make that brainstorming sessions actually begin on the seventeenth as well, because that's, they'll start after the orientation, everybody has their goals, does that make sense? So the orientation will happen on March seventeenth.
Got it.
Yep. And that will be a huge group.
That'd be a huge group.
Got it.
And if the brainstorming sessions are really then kind of each town, each subcommittee will meet on their own, and they can basically schedule with that whenever it's convenient for the three or four of them.
So do you have between dates, so between this state and this state, they should meet?
I think they'll come back together on March twenty.
Will there be five?
Possibly six, because as we think the SAU needs one, two.
And the SAU compares the high school.
High school, that's why I'm at the high school, SAU.
Oh, so if you keep that as a cooperative or whatever.
Right.
Keep it its own entity, SAU and high school.
Are we not? Are we not following the procedures for meetings?
Well, that was gonna be my question, as a subcommittee of the school board, they would be subject to ninety-one A, so they're allowed to be yeah, more in meetings and minutes kept, so.
So. Yeah, I think we're gonna maybe like one of the first, maybe when the whole group gets together, we let the subgroups know that they need to let the SAU know when their meetings are, they need to stay on that timeline so that Misty can just post it once.
Yep.
And she knows, all right, the third, whatever is Walpole, the third, because I don't, I really don't want to make any more work than we're already gonna make for them.
Exactly. Um, in that same vein, we make a
Thank you.
district space available and places, groups need a space to meet.
Probably have, they'll be the administrator on these groups, we might have a principals, we might be able to meet at those schools themselves.
Well, I can usually, it's community spaces, but just in case somebody wants. We could meet either in the school or we could meet in the town hall. Um, it's pretty.
Yeah, I think it's up to the group. So there may be six.
Yeah. So just back to, this brainstorming session begins.
It would be, it wouldn't come to fifteenth, right?
Well, it was on the fifteenth, but we're not starting the group orientation until the seventeenth, so we couldn't, can we say that's the seventeenth, the left them have the two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay.
The dates in here are arbitrary.
Right. There you go, two, that's.
We do need to document. We, we put it back up here, the groups that we need to create. Self-commased, self, or what do you want to follow, it's just.
February twenty-fourth, confirm membership?
Leading out to the outreach.
You're on the outreach.
Just kind of putting something, or just make sure we have those.
So announce process, solicit participation, you could change that to solicit participation for each town level sub-town, each town subcommittee.
Can we call them pre-existing districts?
Sorry?
Can we call them pre-existing districts? I know that's how it's gonna check back to the articles of agreement when we have to.
For each town's pre-existing district, we had five of them.
Each town pre-existing?
I would say each town's like ownership pre-existing district.
And.
Does it say pre-existing district? I really don't.
That was the terminology we had to use for the last Charles Town study.
They're not individual districts, though.
They were pre-existing.
Oh, from, oh, before, okay, yeah, yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, 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 sixty, yes. Is it sixty? Yes. Since nineteen sixty-four, they signed the first agreement.
And, yes, and SAU or SAU slash high school?
I that's a heavy lift, because the SAU will have so many ways.
Five departments.
Right, so did we have them looked at separately?
And I don't know, like, how do you deal with the five departments? Like, has anybody talked to an attorney about how it works? I think that's like one of, I think we can do this, but I think that's like a big question, I.
What do you mean, five departments? I'm sorry.
No, you're, no. Special Ed, transportation, maintenance.
So you're saying we would need a subcommittee for each department?
I don't know, I'm wondering how that works.
I think it, it depends on how the town decided to go, if, let's just.
You're right.
Play it out, if Langley decide to become a Goshen. Right? But Goshen has no schools. They have, they have a part-time
Special Ed director.
Part-time special ed and those part-time business minister, Mary Henry, everything else. She's not?
No.
I thought she was.
No, she left us in the middle of, but she should try.
They, they, they tuition out.
You need somebody, I'm happy to help.
They tuition.
Oh, I have somebody.
So, and then, I don't know how they take care of transportation. I think Goshen takes them to the town line, we pick them up, is that what happens?
Yeah.
Right? So, there's options. How that, so that's gonna play out, how that lays out. Right? So.
Well, Matt will be here Wednesday, so.
Yeah, that's one of them, like, like, how do you handle all of those pieces? Because those are all individual pieces right now of the big.
Isn't that one of the things that that group is gonna be?
It's one of the methods, there's six methods, right? The high school's one of them. There's five more, of which one of those methods is SAU services.
So you, Matt, do you see the high school being a part of the SAU meeting? Or do you see it being two separate pieces?
Yeah, I've never done this before, so I don't really have any preconceived notion of seeing anything, really.
Well.
Oh, sorry, Sarah.
No problem. My, it, having worked in a district that in a, you know, that, I guess it was, in an SAU, there was an SAU with a bunch of districts in it. We had, the SAU was, was, there was one board that was the SAU board. There was a high school board, and then a board for Floodbrook, a board for, you know, for each of the different each of the different elementary schools, basically. And so, and the, the high school was the middle school, high school. So, so that, that's how that was set up, was, was, there was, there was a lot of boards.
Yeah, but was that Vermont?
It wasn't Vermont.
Vermont's totally different with cooperative law than.
I'm just saying how the setup.
No, I get it, but we're that way.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I have four boards.
I don't think the SAU and the high school should be part of the same group, because they're gonna be gathering completely different information.
Okay, I, I'm inclined to agree.
That's my only thought on that, like, the SAU, if there is a committee for them, are gonna be tasked for something like exactly what Jamie's asking right now. How does transportation work with five different districts? How does, how are we gonna break down special Ed? How are we gonna break down the toilet paper?
Right.
You know, where, because of our methods. But then I think the high school is its own little entity up here, because they're gonna be tasked with I don't know what they're gonna be tasked with, but.
Hold on, go ahead.
I do think that on that very smartly added on the seventeenth, inviting at least two superintendents from multi-district configurations to come. And then they, we can that might be part of that, questions that we think about, we want to ask, and this is a big one, how do you?
You should get the superintendent from Menadonock Regional High School, which will, this is true, because I think they would be very vocal at this particular point.
Cooperative, I don't think they're individual towns, Keane is individual towns.
Yeah, I already talked to Rob Mulligan, he said he would be happy to come. Keane actually has, they have a BA for towns, and there's seven or eight of.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Towns, and then they have a BA for Keane, for Keane, so in the SAU.
Hillsborough Dearing has a district that tuitions all of their students, a district that has their elementary building and tuitions everybody to the high school and the cooperative.
We should, we should.
Hillsborough Dearing.
How many towns?
Four. Um, yeah. Because Hillsborough Dearing is the cooperative, and so then, then everybody tuitions to middle and high.
So they're a pseudo-cooperative, only for a portion of it.
Yeah, but I, I had four boards.
Right.
So, yeah, four boards there, because the SAU board as well, food service, so there were, there were different positions that were at the SAU level and charged out in services.
Maybe they would be, maybe we could get them to come.
I, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to come talk to me. But.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
I mean, I didn't go through all.
Eighteen in the state.
We could ask our superintendent, I could ask them.
There's quite a few co-ops in the state, but I think they're all, all their makeups are a little bit different.
So I don't know enough. Let me go back now to these committee, creation of committees. What do you want the SAU committee to be, who, who should be on that?
They're not gonna be, they'll get five people on that SAU committee.
No, I don't know how. And the high school committee too. Is that why select board member, one school board member, is one of the at-large school board members?
I think it, what it's looking like is that there are seven different committees, if we each take one.
Yeah, I get, now, this one.
Can we take out the SAU committee? And just have the four, or five, something, no, I'm kidding.
Okay. Who else should be on the SAU? That'll be our business administrator, right?
Well, she's.
And I gotta kind of dabble in everything.
Yeah, she's gonna be, I just can't attend seven meetings.
No, 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 no.
There isn't a clone of you?
We need them.
No, but if an at-large member goes on, it probably should be one of us, who knows how SAU's work. So really, regardless of whether it's me or Mary defeats me, we're both be it. So it would make sense that whomever sits in this at-large seat does the SAU subject, right? Because both of us know it.
And I'm happy to take the high school, because upon you putting money on other ways.
And that way, maybe you don't have to go to because we both know how this one works, that's the you know, or used to know how it worked, right? It still works kind of the same, so we at least both have an advantage in that way.
Just be careful, because one of the things that we asked people last time that they were gonna join a board or one of these committees, that they put time into it, if we are mandating that a school board member has to be on one of these committees, just be mindful that there may be members who cannot dedicate that much time, just saying.
No, it's important to recognize. And I think we are perfectly able to have those conversations with each other and be like, hey, I can only do this much, can you fill it? Or here's what's going on, and have those conversations and really just support each other through this. I mean, it's a lot, you know.
What kind of other representation do we have in the SAU, besides a administrator and a school board member? What kind of community? Do we need a select board person just from somewhere or?
You're running out of select. Now, I think, what about asking one of the at-large members on the budget committee? Because they're elected too, what do you think about that, Kate? Think that's a good idea for, for the SAU? Yeah, so we could reach out to see if one of the budget committee members would. Yeah, EC member, yeah.
So there is only one person running for the open seat, and he's from Charles Town, and then Jerry Henry is the other at-large member on the budget.
I don't think it matters.
Right, I'm just saying that.
Yeah.
You already.
I don't know if it needs to be an at-large member, but maybe it does.
Yeah, so the high school committee, the budget committee member?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I think we should be asking the budget committee members if they're interested in these committees to begin, but.
Right.
They would add a.
Right.
For the town, for the town wants to, if the budget committee members want to, yes.
I think maybe at least two residents, two district residents for each of those.
And I thought we said select board member from each town or their designate. So like, if they want to put the town treasurer on, right, or.
I designate Alyssa, but you don't even know.
I'm already.
A town designate.
Did you see her face, don't you?
Maybe one of them has a lawyer that they want to stick.
I just added, or they're designated.
Right, well, and, and I think it's important to recognize that we can't direct the select board to be a part of it.
Right, exactly.
The feasibility study does, so.
But that's by law.
They're sticking it on their own warrants.
That's true.
Okay.
You'll need an admin.
Community representation on the SAU committee.
Yeah.
Yes, how many?
I actually think you need a member from each town, I think the SAU committee is a bigger lift, but I also think it affects each town, and so there needs to be a perspective.
So what, one resident from each town?
Then you're gonna have a committee of about eleven. Just nine or eleven.
So this is, that's not, that's not terrible. But the same thing with the high school committee, one resident in each town?
You could try.
Yeah, well, that's exactly, I think it's something we should try more, and I think we will get people who are interested in being a part of the high school committee above all other things.
So, I'm sure you will.
Okay.
Holy cow.
All right.
That's a lot of trick and solid. That whole committee right there. That would take our.
Will be sacrificed for this study.
Kitchen staff is gonna have to work. Kitchen staff is gonna have to work overtime on those big, big joining ones.
Dr. Hubbard.
Joe, we haven't heard from you in this part, do you have anything you want to add?
I know, I was just, um, um. Admiring the chicken salad, but, um, other than that, I, I was just thinking that, uh. It, I, I agree, this is gonna be a big, uh, lift to get this many people out of. Alstead to, to be on all of the committees that, that you're looking at here. Um, I'm not sure who these people are gonna be.
All we can do is ask, but they can't say they weren't asked.
That's true.
We'll help the select boards, help us look back to try and find.
Well, um, when, in the, in the group that, that, that first created the district. Well, what was the makeup of that group?
That sixty years ago, I actually read all that stuff.
It was, oh, was it?
I mean, I know, I know it was.
Yeah, it was, I, I don't have the book, the book was in my office, the old book, the very first one from nineteen sixty. So on one of the covers.
I think there was an emergency town.
Yeah, because back then Marla was discussing it, so.
Oh, that's right.
There were other towns involved.
But I think in, in the Articles of Agreement, it, it might even list.
It does, I think it does. No, it's not, I want to step forward. But there's a treasure trove of. Books, if nobody threw them out, they were in the back world. Cause we had one from every single, even the original annual report books. That had a ton of information. I just forgot.
We scroll up now to March seventeen. Well, that must be it. Keep going.
So as we're going there, do you think he will be able to write the invitation document that we can get a committee to send out? But you don't mind doing that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, God, I'm gonna play with this, just.
I just sent myself an email right now, told myself to do that, so.
That's what I'm writing it down, so. Invitation document. So, okay, yeah, we do a March tenth on the confirmed membership of committees or subgroups.
Yes, we're on the second phase two, which just starts on March seventeenth, which is the orientation meeting.
So, but confirm membership's March tenth. Do all these people have to be sworn in? No, because they're subgroups, right?
Yeah, they're not elected officially.
Oh, well, they keep meeting minutes, well, they keep attending.
Can you use chat G P I to do that? That meeting thing, I love it.
So I do a transcript?
I have a what you call AI, I don't know what it's called, I got. Yeah, and then it gives you little things on following up, and who's gonna do it, who said what, whole thing, it's amazing. Somebody said to me. So I have something else, but I don't know how I got it, you know, it's like, how did you do that?
Okay, so.
Five a month.
Brainstorming begins on the seventeenth, and that's just really to talk about the options that that group wants to explore, it's not an in-depth thing, but to come up with. Um, it's really one meeting for one afternoon. We probably could move. March the twenty ninth, the research group meeting. Earlier.
So are you saying, you know, that's two weeks? If you're putting one and two, where you put the first and fifteenth together, right? On one day. So that's this, you're just taking the first off. We're wiping off the first.
First of March, the research group meeting of thirty first of March.
Yeah, that's two weeks.
So, uh, March thirty first, now the next one I think needs a lot more time, that March thirty first and April twelve is not about time.
Remember you got an April break in that.
Yeah. So.
Could you possibly put every, the two that are under April twelfth? Put it under March thirty first, delete the twelfth, and then just go right to the April twenty eighth? So for March, so from March thirty first until April twenty eighth, you're gonna do. The research group plus the data analysis where you're compiling everything? So you wouldn't have that middle meeting.
Right. So it'd be the twenty, either be the twenty.
Think they need the middle meeting? Cause they can't present the findings without. Compiling it together. I think the first meeting, they're just gonna present preliminary ideas.
Yeah.
But you're not just gonna have one meeting between March thirty first and March, April twenty eighth. The subgroups are gonna meet and do all of.
Their thing.
All of that stuff, right? Compile analysis as much as they can. Assess feasibility and potential impacts, and then would come back on the twenty eighth and do an intro.
I, I, I agree with you, kind of, it's not like, it's not that you have to do it that day, it's that you start at that day. Right, sure.
So you're making the twelfth and the twenty sixth the same or not? Making the twelfth a part of the thirty first or ongoing? So it should say data analysis, you should have March thirty first with, with two bullet points, one is research group meeting. And then the second bullet point, data analysis, which should say ongoing. Right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then April twenty eighth, you're, you're bringing him in.
Twenty eighth is a, is a Monday, it's a school board meeting, is that all, okay?
Yeah, we just have to. You have to let Misty know so she can menangle our meetings around.
Well, it's, it's the second one of the month, so generally a workshop meeting, does that, does this become our meeting?
Oh, yeah, that's a good.
Is that school vacation week?
No, that's. School vacation was the twenty first through the twenties. So let me change this date to be.
I don't ever recall having two school vacation weeks when I was growing up, so I'm not sure what that is about. Really?
Do you have to? I'm trying to think if I did or not.
I always remember two.
Yeah, we had two.
I think we did, I know we had February, because it was winter carnival for Newport, not a big deal. I don't remember about Aprils, we never went anywhere, so you know.
So then we're on phase three.
All right. So, May first, so Thursday.
That's not gonna work.
Well, that's each town doing its own thing anyway, so, is, is that, it kind of gives towns. A month of May to, um.
So why don't we put May one to, why don't we put like a May one to whenever?
Yeah, it is May one to July third first.
Let's look at the.
Oh, no, no, I mean.
May first through. Like the May twenty seventh, twenty third. What, do you wanna come back on our workshop?
Cause our workshops are the twenty seventh.
Well, that's Memorial Day. Right.
The twenty seventh.
Right, I think so, right? Meeting like everybody, fifty million people or what? Cause it should be.
Yeah, people just kind of make their reports and have.
So naturally, each, each subgroup could send a designate.
Correct.
Or whoever, or whoever wants to attend, but that would be the first time. As in my understanding, that would be the first time these subgroups have gotten together. Since they started, correct?
Okay, yeah.
They would be meeting along the way, this would be the first.
Yeah.
But the subgroups are meeting, but not the entire group.
Correct, right, so this would be the first time that Elsted. Act where all the towns came together, together, as one.
Says research group presents findings to school board.
Yeah, but that's a school board meeting, so each group is gonna present individually.
Right, but on the twenty seventh, it's another workshop school board.
When does the groups, when did, when did the groups come together to start being as a? So. You're not, you're not following me. It's great that we do.
I don't know that I am. Keep going.
It's great that we do all this, but if all we have are all these subgroups. And we don't spend a considerable amount of time all together. Because. There could be information in each group that another group could utilize, so. Acworth and Elsted and Langdon, there could be information. That Acworth may have that Elsted didn't think about. And because we're not communicating all together. When we go to meet on the twenty seventh. We're already starting to draft a proposed. Development, but we haven't all spoken.
I think the draft proposal development's early.
Can I, I suggest something? Um, uh, what, since, since notes are gonna be taken in each one of these subgroup meetings. What would make sense is that we make sure that one of the, one of the topics that, that, that is. That is covered in each of those meetings is to. Is to review what was done at the other meetings.
Right, so one possible.
So you kind of get an idea, it's, it's, that, that, like, have that be the first thing that's on everybody's agenda? Review what everyone else has been doing. Now go back into what's going on in your town. Does that mean? I mean, that kind, that a little bit takes care of that.
So then we could go back and say the SAU committee is made up of the at-large member and then one member from every town.
Yeah, that's a second meeting.
I know, but.
Hey, I, I would not, I would not wanna do that.
All right, so.
You're looking at doing all of these meetings plus.
Right, so that's, that's good, we can, we can move forward then, so we first meet.
Well, I'm retired, but Mary isn't, so it might be easier for one of us over the others, I don't know.
So we can. Meet. As a whole group on March seventeen. And then the towns will often do their own thing, we come back together on March thirty first. For the research group meeting. We go off and we do our own data analysis based on what, how we think we want to break up our little. Things, our town, our kids. Um, and then we come back together on April.
That's a group.
So you're, you're touching base every thirty days. To your point, Shelley, I think that, that's what was meant to happen there.
I'm fine with that, that is not how I took. That, so that's fine, I think if, if it wasn't every thirty days, reading minute notes is not gonna do it. Just because.
Go ahead, Kevin.
That's where I was. That was every, every, as you said, about every thirty days, the group comes back together at least once a month. Try and. Maybe that's just an agenda item is that we have a share out of where we stand or whatever.
So. So if we look at. The thirty first.
Of which month?
March thirty first, I think, yes. And I know I backed up a little bit, but data analysis. Compile financial and staffing data. And then getting the interim report on April twenty eighth. How possible is it with? Six groups, seven groups, four. Or three? To get groups what they need.
Yeah, I, I wrote down, that's tight, that's gonna be tight.
Yeah.
I have an idea, but I don't know that it's feasible or acceptable.
What's your idea?
You're, she's wrapping up a district, opening another one, starting the middle, the third.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's either. We don't need to hire another person who knows how to do this, right? Or find out from the auditor and the lawyer if it's possible or okay to give one of us. Auditor rights within the system to pull the information down.
Well, I, I, I'm.
I, you know, I, I know how, I know how to run the software.
I'm pretty sure you don't want me in there.
Chicken salad's fine. I mean, your financial data, no. We both do, right, all three of us, you know, or, or ask another BA who's maybe part-time or retired or whatever. If they wanted to do a part-time gig to come in and pull down the data. The problem when, if you're asking somebody to do it, doesn't understand us. You, you're gonna have to, you know, you know how it is, right, Lori, it's like a freaking do it myself, cause it's easier to come and explain it to somebody.
So I'll ask, if that's okay with the board, I'll ask Matt about that.
No, because. Depending, so, A, if I'm here, we'd have to get permission, find out what, you know, whatever. I'll be retired, I conceivably will have time to data mine. B, if I'm not sitting here, I'm still retired and have time to help data mine. I could be hired. Right, I mean, whatever, so either way, I think it's an avenue, I thought. Cause either way, if those other things pass. And there's that much work that has to be done, you're still gonna need to help, have somebody to help data mine all that. That far back, as I really think. I think that. I'm not so much, I'm not so sure how much. The town subgroups are going to need the financial information. Figuring that the SAU is compiling. Their own information, right, so we just talked about it earlier. So you're gonna have a, an SAU subgroup who is probably gonna work on something like transportation. So then the town group is not gonna have to say to, to you, Lori. What does transportation look like for Charleston, because you're already working on that. With the sub.
That's true.
Um, but I know that I see Sarah leaving, and I know that Alyssa's gonna need to leave, so I don't wanna get trumped up on this.
I just, I, I think Alyssa's gonna stay as long as she can, but the, I wanna be at. They start at six thirty, and they have other things on their agenda, but I wanna be there.
Okay.
Okay, I'll let everybody know when.
Thank you, Sarah.
I don't know where you're going, but okay.
I don't, I don't think we should get trumped up on that, because I'm.
Right, we can.
In my, in my mind, I'm looking at the SAU being the financial one. Well, number one, that's where the majority, I mean, other than Jamie. But, but you're gonna be on the high school one, right? So that's a good spot for you, but I'm not so sure how much. The towns are gonna need to. Really tie into financial.
Build their own.
Right, but if they're already pulling, the SAU is gonna already pull that apart, because they're gonna have to look at that.
Well, and realistically, we are, those reports, you can go right to the budget. Uh, page on the website, and you can pull up Alsted budget, so they already have.
You can, it's a matter of how far back do they want them and what form they're.
Right, but I'm just saying it's already accessible, it shouldn't, it's not like it needs to be created, it just needs to be.
I think for like final town, it's like world, lots of questions of. If we're on, if you're on HR, if you are on HR, how do we fill that out?
Which those are SAU questions.
They dovetail in, but they're not necessarily.
Right. Um. I said, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't really understand how this, this RSA whatever thing works. We can have little towns and how they they're doing it. They're in charge of these, but. There's, there's more to that. What does that mean? So hopefully we'll get some of those answers, questions answered. We talk to some superintendents.
Yeah, I don't think there's any standard. Yeah, I don't think it matters how big or small you are. There are questions that every town is gonna have to have. Whether we want to share HR costs.
Has never done this.
This is brand new and we're. Was curious. I think they've done it when they started the co-op. Oh. I'm not so sure. That once you're married, that somebody has gone back to say. Now we just want, now we just want visitation rights on some of this. It's hard because that's the analogy that they use even on a state level that we're all married. But now we're all set every day with Dresden and Hanover. Yeah, but now we're saying. Maybe we don't want to be married, but. We like each other enough to hang around a little bit.
Co-parent.
Yeah, co-parent, yeah, we want to co-parent.
Now, my, my question was more about the new RSA. Is this a brand new RSA?
No.
No.
Okay.
So what we could do, please scroll, Brandon, if you scroll a little bit. Yeah. Right about there. Give me the April twenty eighth date top there. We could, we could move that April twenty eighth date down to like May, end of May. And compress the computer, the uh, community engagement a little bit.
Yeah.
I think that would, um. Yeah, that would work.
Yeah, so you're not gonna need a bunch of public meetings like Acworth. It's probably only gonna hold one. That Charleston may have two dates, maybe.
So May twenty seventh is that next workshop day. Make that.
You're gonna put an interim report there.
Yeah. That gives us two months. April and May to do all that data analysis. And if we start, you really start this in probably June one, new engagement. Um. How long do you think we need for public brainstorming meetings? They're probably small informational meetings, probably not gonna try and brainstorm in. In them. So June one to June fifteen.
Well, it depends on when they hold their meetings. Does every single town? Hold two meetings a month?
After summer meeting?
Yeah.
No. But it's not necessarily on their schedule.
Yeah.
It's summer too, so they might not be, they might have a summer schedule.
You can't, yeah, you could, well, you can't, you can't rely on the select board to hold these meetings. They're gonna be. Just, I'm just wondering how many meetings there are already. You're asking for one of them to be a member or a designate. So I'm curious how many meetings there are already in. Every town is different. So Charleston, right now, we have five board members. Could have three. Um.
Can you meet weekly?
We meet weekly plus there's ex officio committees. Plus this committee. Plus school board. So.
Great follower.
So I changed that to June first to June fifteenth, somewhere in that.
January the twentieth. This one is in summer.
Okay, yeah. So June twenty.
You got graduation. When's graduation for the high schools?
Probably different.
It should be the weekend before the nineteenth. Fourteenth, isn't it?
So here's um. What I'm wondering, one of my questions was, do we need a public brainstorming thing? Meeting. Before or as all of these subcommittees are getting going, like. Do you want people from the district to come and say this is what we envision for moving forward, like?
No, that's the subcommittee's job.
For each of those towns. But is this an opportunity for us to hear from the public who may say? We would like to all stay together and here's how I think it should be done? Like, there could be other ideas out there that we're not considering.
If we're, if we're studying one ninety five sixteen A. We should study one ninety five sixteen A. If you open it up. Then you're, I think you're. I think the public may get the impression that we could do it. Differently, and I'm not sure that's. That's not what we've.
And I think. Back to the, I I think to your point, though, back in the March seventeen, the other brainstorming sessions begin. I think it says that the town, that that those subcommittees couldn't invite. Town people, you know, what's gonna happen, what's gonna happen there? Like, it's just, that's just a really. Yeah.
I think so.
Okay.
And the SAU, the SAU subcommittee could do it, and the high school subcommittee could do it as well.
Because I want to be very clear that each town subgroup needs to explore configuration options.
Right, and then you've got. Maintain autonomy to form sub cooperatives, other creative solutions. So where it says other creative solutions. You might expand on that. It's a bullet point on March seventeen. You might just expand on that, including.
Community feedback?
Yeah, community input.
You're doing. Okay.
Because I just, I want to be clear that one ninety five sixteen A does not tell you which. Uh, grades you're supposed to have or not. There is no study that it directs. It simply says you can add or decrease the grades that's going forward. So we aren't tying into anything.
Right, because I think part of this too is each, um, the Alstead attendance area might decide, we need to have us, we need to come together and talk about, do we want to become our own little mini SAU? Service and maybe. Or sub, thank you. Um. So I, I think we have time for that in there.
Oh, I think you're gonna see those happening.
Okay. So can we go back to phase three? And. So the research, uh, public information meetings from June first to June twentieth. Uh, June twenty third is a. A Monday. For the next one.
It is.
For the research group meeting.
That would be our workshop.
Yeah, well, it's, it's nothing there because we don't, we normally wouldn't be there. We don't meet June. We don't, you don't need to some.
So I, I would just, my concern would be this is the twenty third. It's like the last opportunity of the month or. Unless you want to schedule a meeting on the third, if for board business for your. Like anything last minute that comes up.
Oh, right, June twenty third, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think maybe. Push that to the thirtieth, June thirtieth.
Yeah, because the board will probably need a wrap-up leaping on the twenty third for business.
Two thirty. All right, so the draft proposal will be from June thirty two. July. Proposal. Proposal review is on the tenth, which is Thursday. Um, July twenty first. It's a Monday.
There's just.
Yeah.
Two, three weeks.
I said, yeah, June. June thirty to July twenty first, and then the proposal review is then on July twenty first. The final drafts by July thirty first. That's, that's, that's.
Final draft would be by, I would say, August fourth, August. Cause that's two weeks.
That's probably a document exchange. And then phase.
The fourteenth to the eighteenth or. To what? The eighteenth.
Eighteenth, which is a Monday.
That's the third Monday.
That's whole town meetings and gather feedback.
And it would be the eighth September eighth.
September eighth.
But that's, uh, you know, that's okay. Well, now Labor Day, so we'll push Labor Day.
Would we need seven?
It is water.
Yeah, uh, yes.
Seven and four. Okay, so that won't work because the eighth is our meeting. Eighth is our regular business.
Okay.
Seventh or the fifteenth.
Right.
And then two weeks thereafter would be the October ninth, the June. Well, no, two weeks later from the fifteenth, actually the twenty ninth. So, but you could push to. What'd you say? We're the second fourth.
Yeah.
So you could push on the sixth, October sixth.
To what, the school board review?
Yes, unless you want to bring it on our first meeting in October, which is the third.
On the sixth. You said the sixth.
The sixth, yeah, because Columbus Day is the thirteenth, so. Just.
Final revisions, three weeks later, October twenty seventh.
That's our workshop, yeah.
Okay. Public distribution of final plan, that's just.
Whenever.
Whenever, right? So that's October thirteen.
November thirteen.
November thirteen. That's a five, you can send it on a Thursday. Just, that's just sending a document, right? It's been vetted by all the groups and everyone says. And then. The last one is just public meetings begin on December first, sometime around December first. Is that, is December first? That's a Monday, so. Um. So that's just, that's just setting a placeholder that we plan to be done and ready to have a report in five, six, seven, eight, to start scheduling meetings.
More aware to be on March of twenty four, I think, possible, Warren.
Some may be ready, some may not. You can't force people to consensus.
It'll be.
I'm exhausted. Um. Also, any, any dates in the middle of June, I won't be around. So. You can find me in Bermuda.
In June?
We'll give you a. Zoom. We're leaving the last name school, so no snow days, so I like the two hour delays. Thank you.
You're very welcome. I put it in the suitcase.
Are we feeling cruising?
Overwhelmed cruising? Yes, yes. My daughter is very much into the Starbucks drinks for free, so.
I think this is incredibly ambitious.
Yep.
I'm excited because I like to get things done. I'm happy to jump in with both feet. So banquet's pretty. Yes, those things are gonna happen all in with this.
So have to keep the SAU down, left all the roar, so we could keep, keep on track of all this other stuff.
Okay. We'll see how excited you are. At the end of June, when I come back, better still be like. Yeah, we're killing it.
All right, so.
We're sending you with a flipping thingy for. There's no, there's no internet.
There is.
There is too.
No. Pay for.
My, my mother lived in there, okay?
So could we talk about dissemination of this? That we want to get it, we want to get this out to at least the select board? Is that we want to have, ask Mr. to put together a. Actually, I'm writing an email, aren't I?
Yes.
Okay.
They're doing the invite document.
Okay.
So it will go to also, remember, but it will also go out via our other channels. It'll be on our website. It'll go through the Facebook pages so that we can hopefully reach a pretty wide audience of people who are.
Who are the people supposed to notify? In the invitation listing. That's a lot to put on her plate.
That's who we normally.
I get that.
Yeah, it is.
I'm, I I'm sorry. I just really, and it's not gonna be popular. I don't really care. Okay, because that's just where I am in life at this point.
Then who the person at the SAU?
I think that we should. Perhaps. Hire somebody to do this part time. And run all of this stuff and put it in the paper and do this and do that, do every other damn thing. I should find an end time that needs a job, but, um. You know, um, or. Yeah, I just think it's a lot. It's a lot. This is a lot to keep track of, plus the school board members, plus the office, plus supers, plus having new people coming in. I, I just think. I mean, she's our board secretary, and I get that, or whatever they call it nowadays, but. This is like a special project. That we told the towns, if you're gonna make us do this, you're paying for it, right? And so I think if, if we're gonna choose to do this because people are holding our feet to the fire. Um, that we have every right or opportunity to put aside ten or twelve grand and hire somebody, whatever it takes, to manage this project. So ten or twelve. Grand at the. Cut it out somewhere. That's gonna about, about to get approved?
There's superintendencies.
Yeah, so, so that's just my feeling on the matter. So I think when we come back around. At the next meeting, which is what, next month?
Yeah.
That. That's my feeling on it because, you know what I mean, and and then it's a, it takes the stress off of her. And it's a perhaps an impartial person. I don't know. No, I mean, there are people who do these things.
Yeah.
Like your retire.
Yeah, like a retiree or retired somebody to have a good one.
You're one of our town members, your town folks.
Put it, put it on the agenda for Monday.
Yeah.
With the other board members here.
Yeah.
We'll talk about it. Maybe we can get a posting out there to see. If there's anybody, you could even just say like office help. Blah blah. It's really just a project clerk, because if.
Perk of the words.
It's a project clerk for. You know, postings, paperwork dissemination, meeting.
It doesn't take that much, um. Knowledge of the school district. It just takes the organization and the connection.
Right. And being given the authority to post stuff on there and take care of, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Right. Any thoughts on, while we turn?
No, thank you for this. I know we're discussing this. Yes, thank you, Kevin, for, for everything.
Uh, next week.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
We don't have, uh, anybody online, so I'll be better.
Hi.
Thank you.